Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Special Committee of the Whole for Monday, May 20th, 2024. We are in council chambers and we are also on Zoom. So with that, Clerk McCurry, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Piazza, Counselor O'Talley, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Patterson via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. All right, new business to referrals, boards and commissions. So we have two new commissioners, one for planning and zoning and one for Youth Advisory Board. And then we have two existing members. Harbor Management Commission Terry Sang will be upgraded from an alternate to a permanent member. And George Scully will be reappointed to the Groton Utilities Commission. So do you have any questions or comments on them? Counselor Sheffield?
On Colleen Lothrup, I guess her name is?
Yep. Is she here? Colleen, please come up. I want to make sure the microphone's on. I don't know if, I can't see if it's great. Okay. All right. So please introduce yourself and...
Okay, well, I'm Colleen Lothrup. I'm originally from Alaska, but we are here with the Navy, my husband and I, and we have fallen in love with Groton. And we live right in the city and we've really enjoyed it. I'm also a civil engineer, and so I'm really passionate about how places are developed. And I think that it'd be really helpful to get more involved in the planning and zoning around here, both to learn how the process works, but also to apply my expertise.
Okay, great. Counselor Sheffield?
Yes, thank you. Your resume is quite impressive. Thank you very much for looking to serve the city. We thank you. My question was, I guess, since you are military dependent, how long do you plan on being in Groton? I know the term is to expire in '27, I believe. So will you be here for the full duration of the term of the assignment?
It's never absolutely for sure with the military.
Right, right.
But that is our plan.
Typically rotations are three-year terms? Three-year tours?
Okay.
Depending on whether he's at sea or on shortening. But it's usually a three-year rotation, so I don't have any issue with the dates.
Okay, well, like I said, perfect that she's here with her credentials. We would like you for the full three years. So that's, that's great. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you so much for volunteering. It's funny, I usually tell people when they first join a board or commission that this is not one for new people to join in the city because it's very technical. So it's really nice to have someone who already has technical knowledge to join the board because I'm sure there's quite the learning curve when, when people first join when they don't have that background. So again, to echo what Counselor Sheffield said, your resume is very impressive and it's really helpful to the city when people are willing to use their expertise to help us make decisions. So thank you again.
Thank you so much. I'm also transferring to a job here in the northeast area. So I'll be able to know more about the local, more local zoning, or zoning, but also like state laws and things like that, so.
Well, it's perfect and it's great that you're volunteering. We depend on volunteers and all our boards and commissions in order to get the work done of the city. So thank you very much. Any other comments from counselors? Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to move these four to tonight's mayor and council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay. Next thing we're gonna do, because I have, thank you, Colleen. There's a, we have so many Groton Utilities staff here. I want to move the Groton Utilities budget presentation next. So Ron, you're gonna kick off? All right, we're gonna turn that over to Director Uhasse, and he will conduct the budget review.
So I'd like to first start out by thanking E., the finance team at GU with Linda, all the general managers and all of the employees that helped put these budgets together. There is a lot of work and a lot of time that is spent putting these budgets together, all three of them. With that being said, I believe when the budgets were sent to you, there was a link to the Utility Commission meeting that was very in-depth. I believe it was probably like an hour and a half long, if not longer, that went into a lot of detail with these budgets. So we're gonna keep it at a very high level today and just kind of do a quick overview because all that detail was discussed in those meetings. So the discussion points for today is the contributions to the City of Groton, the rates, how the revenue was designed, the operation expense, the capital projects, the debt service, and the cash flow. Contributions to the City of Groton, the electric transfers, 4.1 million, which is no change from the past previous couple of years. Additional cash and non-cash contributions equal 2.8 million, which is up 228,000. Those increases were related to the finance and HR budgets mainly and a couple of other things there. The total benefit provided to GU to the city is 6.9 million. So that's just kind of an overview of what the utilities gives back to the city in return for being a public utility. For the rates, the rates are currently, for the electric division, are 39% or $78.8 below the benchmark for the residential average customer who uses 700 kilowatt hours. For water, it's 5% or $2.54 below the benchmark for average customer of 500 cubic feet. And then for sewer, we're 43% or $28.89 below the benchmark for the average user of 500 cubic feet as well. So those are just kind of an average to see where we are in relation to other utility companies in the area. The way that the revenue is designed is based on historical usage. So when we look at the electric revenue, you'll see that it's 51.6 million or 8% less than last year, or down 4.3 million. Even though we do have the rate increase, the kilowatt sales are down 4%, which is why the revenue number came down, along with the purchase power adjustment is down 93%. So that's why there is the actual rate decrease coming, coming forward. The water revenue is 12.9 million or 3% more than the previous year's budget, 434,000. That has to do with a rate increase of 5%, but also a decrease in the cubic feet budget of 2%. For the sewer revenue, it is 3.9 million, down 5% or 229,000. Again, that's due to the decrease in budget cubic feet sales by 6% with the, adjusted with the 3% rate increase. So that's the general view of the revenue. The revenue, unlike on the city side where the taxes, you back into that number, the revenue is actually one of the first things that's derived here and it's based off of historical and any known changes. But this budget, there are no assumption changes. For the most part, it is truly off historical usage.
Counselor Sheffield?
Ron, with that rate increase on sewer of 3%, that's still, again, and we have, that still keeps it 43% lower than the rates with that 3% increase?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, where our current average rates are.
Okay.
So when we get to the operating and maintenance budget, there are expenses that are divided by the 60, 30, 10. Those are the customer care, the IT, management, finance, and things that are provided for all of this, all the three units. All the expenses that are directly related to a operational unit is charged to that unit. So if it's something for direct, that's for electric, it will be charged to the electric department. If it's a water expense, it'll be charged a water expense. It's just like the customer care expenses are allocated to 60, 30, and 10, which is the same as it's been over the past few years since we've added this sewer division. For the electric O&M budget, it is 18 million. It's an increase of 8% or 1.3 million. The main, we'll kind of go through this as labor and non-labor as to what drives those expenses. The labor expense is up 5.7 million or 12% or 602,000. That's driven by the new contracts along with one FTE increase. The non-labor expense is 12.7 million, up 6% or 731,000. On the water side, the O&M budget is 10.3 million or an increase of 7% or 718,000. The labor expense is 3.9 million, up 7.5% or 268,000, and that is attributed to the contracts and negotiations. The non-labor expense is 6.5 million, up 7% or 450,000. On the sewer side, the O&M is 3.5 million, increase of 3% or 12,000 total. The labor expense of 1.4 million is down 1% or 17,000. That is due to a reduction of one FTE and also the negotiations and the new contracts. The non-labor expense is 2 million. It's an increase of 8% or 29,000. So those are just a quick overview of the O&M expenses that are in the budget. And then on the capital side, for the electric, 2025 budget is 7.2 million, including non-bonded capital projects of 6.8 million, which 1.55 million is funded by the rate stabilization fund for the vehicle replacement. And then there's also Reggie Fund projects of 400,000 for an LED conversion. For the water, it's 4.5 million, including non-bonded capital of 267,000 and bonded of 4.2 million. And again, there's more detail in the budget books with all those capital projects. The sewer for the 2025 is 689,000, which 189,000 of it is non-bonded capital and 500,000 of it is bonded capital. So the non-bonded capital is just from being paid for cash that's on hand versus being bonded with long-term debt. For the debt service, the total debt service for GU is 9.4 million, of which 608 is principal and 2.6 is interest. And that is broken down by 4.7 for the electric, 3.8 for water, and 938 for sewer. So those are just our debt payments that we're obligated to pay based on debt that we've taken out over the past years. And again, unlike the city, with the utilities, we focus on the cash flow is kind of where we go with our budget to make sure that we do have the cash in the checkbook and that we have the balances that are recommended by the cost of service studies, which you've all heard when those presentations are given. So for the electric, the proposed 25 net cash flow from operation is actually a decrease of 2.4 million. The estimated cash balance at the year end will be 16.3 million, which is still 1.3 million above the cost of service recommended cash balance. So it's, even though there's gonna be a decrease in the cash, it still has the recommended amount in there, 1.3 over. So it's not a concern. From the water, it's a decrease net cash flow of 1.5 million, which will leave the operation cash balance at 2.5 million, which is 3.1 below the cost of service recommended minimum cash. We've, we've known that was gonna happen with the result of the water treatment plant upgrade. There's gonna be kind of a dip before that cash flow comes back up with, with the rate increases and so forth. So we, it is below where we would like it to be, but we did know that was gonna happen. So it's not, wasn't an unknown. From the sewer side, it's 639,000 negative cash flow, of which will leave a 2.4 million cash balance, which is only 92,000 below the cost of service recommended minimum cash balance. So pretty close to what is being recommended for the minimum cash balance with the sewer. With that, the proposed 25 budgets will afford the three divisions to meet the debt service requirements and fund growing infrastructure and technology needs, allow for the efficient operation and maintenance of the utility distribution systems, support compensation plans sufficient to attract and retain skilled, high-tech workers, and continue to provide high-reliable, reliable and responsive service that the customers expect at the rates that are fair, competitive, and viewed as providing some value to the customers. So again, I know it was a very high-level overview, but like I said, there was a very detailed meeting that had a lot of that stuff in there. The budget books are in the packet as well. So I don't know if we can open up the questions. I know we do have a lot of GU employees here as well that helped put this budget together.
Okay, I'll open up the floor for questions or comments. Deputy Mayor Depot?
So I probably ask you to do this every year, but can you explain why we, why it's okay to have a negative? Well, one, to have the negative, the cash balance below the recommended cost of service study amount, particularly for water, because that number is large? And why, like if I look at the budget for, I forgot where I was. Like some of the budgets, the net earnings is a negative number. Can you explain why that is?
Yeah, so the way, like I said, the revenues are a revenue number. So we start with that number, unlike with the city budget where you have the taxes. That is the last number that you drive at to create your mill rate. And then you build your expenses off of known and any foreseen changes and with inflation and so forth with it. So it's almost like when you have that negative net earning, it's like using surplus of fund balance from the city side when we use that to help balance the budget. And that's, we're just using cash on hand or fund balance to offset those over expenditures versus the revenue. And then also comes in with the cash flow is that you're adding back depreciation, which is a non-cash number that's included in that net earnings figure. So there's other things that happen. So that's why we really try to focus on the cash flow. And then the question with the cost of service, we would prefer not to be below cost of service. We'd like to be right on target with that. Unfortunately, with the water treatment plant, it, there was, the rates just didn't keep up with that project and it's created some, somewhat of a cash shortage there. And we've had forecasted that, we've been monitoring that. And there is gonna be kind of a loop in that where it should start seeing itself coming back up to the cost of service minimum cash required.
And do we have a projection of when that will be?
It truly is gonna be based off, we, we have a projection, but it's gonna be based on rate studies and what rate increases potentially in the future that'll be approved. I believe it's currently, E., if you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was like a eight or 10-year window before it got back to the cost of service. But again, that's truly gonna be based on future rates. It could be sooner, it could be longer.
Let me, let me address that. So we have a cost service study for water now. And if you look at the, I don't think the graph's in here, but in, in the presentation for Groton Utilities, there was a graph that showed a dip below where we need, where we want to be and where we need to be for water. And part of that is, in the very beginning, we picked a number, we picked a rate schedule that we thought would be a good rate schedule, build up a balance, and not cause rate shock when we finally took the loan and started, the low-interest loan, had to start paying that. We're also, we just put into place rates for water. And we are, I am probably gonna come back to Groton Utilities Commission and then back to council with the recommendation for an increase in a rate change so that we don't, we're not below that recommended cash balance so that it's not harmful to the, to the company. But that's based on a cost of service study that we're gonna be doing.
Okay.
But you have another question?
Mm-hmm.
Please.
Can you explain the risk of having that cash balance below the recommended amount?
So the risk of that would, would be if you were a standalone company, that they want you to have a next number of days' cash on hand to pay your, to pay your bills that essentially are coming in. So the risk of that would be the delay from when the revenue is received to the bills that are due. You wouldn't be able to pay them essentially from that timing. So it's truly, that's how that's derived. With us, what that would mean is we'd most like, if that were to be the case, where it would dip below, or the cash balance got to a certain level that was significantly low, we'd most likely do internal borrowing from ourselves and, and other funds to fund that. We have done that in the past with, with one of the divisions.
That's what I thought you were gonna say. Thank you.
Yep. Do you have any other questions?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding electric water sewer budget? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So in simple terms, because we're talking about being under our goal, basically. I'm putting this as simple as I possibly can, that I'm understanding it. So if I'm, the words aren't right, just correct me, please. So with that happening, and we're talking about rates, so I'm understanding other things are happening, but it also depends on the usage of our customers and the cash flowing in from there with an increased rate already. And so the mayor's already mentioned that we may have another increased rate. How would we tell our city residents? How do we explain this to them? The best way, why our rates are going up and possibly going up again? Like something simple, like, well, remember that big plant that we just put? You know, something that you could actually make so simple for somebody to understand.
And, and that is pretty much the answer right there. I mean, this is being driven mainly by the new upgrades to the water treatment plant and the dropping of the sale, of the usage by, by all customers. And so with that, you can only draw in so much revenue based on how much you're selling. So the only way to increase revenues in the utilities is either to sell more or to increase rates.
Mm-hmm. And you're saying the drop is of usage. So I thought originally when we spoke, it was 700 originally. Was that just for electric? I thought it was for both electric and water unless I misunderstood.
So seven is for the electric and 500's been the average for the water.
Just recently or for how many?
No, I think that's...
That's, that's the benchmark number that we, that we use. And so, yes, that's close to our average, but it's also what other water companies in Connecticut benchmark that exist.
Oh, I see. Other, other places in Connecticut. So this is not just Groton City local average, the 500?
Well, our water department services both city and town.
Right.
And that is our average. It is also a regional benchmark.
Okay.
It just happens to be that they're the same.
Okay.
So a way, so we did a $54 million plant. We estimated how much money we needed in rates. And we wanted to keep it low enough so that it wasn't hurtful to the residents. We want to have enough so that we have the money. The concern was, we didn't want to go from where we were to suddenly the, the plant is now commissioned and we increase rates by 19 or 20%. We didn't want that rate shock. So that's why we did what we did. Part of what, we could say that we might have missed, we might have not... We didn't mess anything up, but we may have underestimated the impact of the, of the low-interest loan. Plus, there's been a decrease in usage of water, which drives revenue down. And then therefore, that is a negative impact to this as well. And once we get the rate study done, then we'll be coming back to the Utility Commission and then we'll come back to the council. And I'll ensure that the council gets an in-depth, usually you have a higher level view than the Utility Commission, but in this case, I'll ensure that you get a deep enough presentation so that you understand it so we can explain it to the rate bearers.
Could I comment on that?
Please.
So is it possible to, to include? I mean, because I didn't know for a long time till I actually came to council in reference to the meters. So when I actually filled my pool, I had to drop it and fill it. I didn't know about the meter till I was actually on council. So I don't know if that's ever been in our water bill, but just maybe something that could be put out. It may have been put out, but I do read my electric bill and I do read all the inserts in it. I'm not sure how many other customers do. But maybe an insert at one time in there in reference to different things that customers could do to look at their water usage. And I'm not sure if somebody actually comes out. I know they come out for energy efficiency, but I don't know if somebody ever comes out and says, you know, checks on plumbing and if your toilet's leaking and blah, blah, blah. And have you thought about a meter? Because you're doing a lot of gardening and so forth and so on, something like that.
We certainly do for electric. I don't know, do we have a service like that for water?
We do. I know on, on like the website and stuff, D. does a lot of water conservation during the summer. And if a customer calls and says they have a high water bill, we just send them tablets to put in the back of their toilets. We'll kind of give them other avenues to look at to be able to help conserve, conserve water. But we don't have, I don't even know if there's even a company out there that would even do that.
Right.
And go in because there's so much in-depth when it comes to plumbing, because so much is hidden versus electric. I can seal a door and automatically it saves. With, with water, there's so much different things.
Right.
That could be, could be wrong. But if a customer does have an issue with a higher-than-usual water bill, we kind of ping through a lot of the information and tablets that they need. And we talk to them about using like the low-flow shower, shower heads and some of this other, other stuff, so.
Okay. So I just wanted to make the comment, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one other point, just to add on to Tina. So our home energy savings program, which is heavily on the electric side, but it does provide low-flow air raiders if the customer wishes and low-flow showerheads also if the customer wishes.
Thank you. So I just wanted to comment, so any citizens that are listening or that we put it out is that definitely, more so that I've come to know, is about gardening in your pool or whatever else you use a large amount of to definitely think about using the meter. You know, it's a purchase in the front, but helps save in the long run for your sewer, so, but.
So in case you're not familiar with what Counselor Piazza was talking about, you can get a D-Duck meter. And basically, you have one meter for your water and then you have a different, so that, because your sewer bill is based on water use. So the water that goes to your pool or goes to your garden, you still pay for sewer, even though it doesn't directly go through the sewer. And you can have a separate meter that that water goes through and therefore that doesn't count against your sewer bill.
Right. Thank you for explaining that. Perfect.
I mean, that's what you were getting at.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't want to mansplain, but I did want to, want to try to reiterate what, what we're trying to do here. Any other questions or comments on electric water sewer? Okay, I'll take a motion to move those three budgets to tonight's mayor and council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, and motion carries. Okay. Thank you all, thank you staff for coming out and thanks for what you do every day.
Thank you.
E., you did a great job on these budgets. Okay. Dan, if you could, come on up. So the next thing is the Brew Run Eastern Point Beach alcohol consumption. We want to continue with what we've done the last couple of years. And I'll get, for those of you that are new on the council, Dan, explain what we're, what we're doing here and then we'll go from there.
Sure. Hi, my name is Dan Boggs. I'm the manager of communications for Groton Utilities. Every year, we have a, what we call the Groton City Brew Run. And it's a combination 5K race along with a brew fest of local breweries down at Eastern Point Beach on the first Saturday after Labor Day. This upcoming year will be our fourth year and it's grown and grown and grown each year and become quite successful. Last year, we had over 500 participants, including over 400 runners, walkers, and so on. So people come and run, and then after the run, they go over to the brew fest and we have food trucks and we have a, a small band. And it's a great activity. It's a great way to draw people into the City of Groton who maybe have never been to the City of Groton and have them all here at once. And so in order to do this event, there's no alcohol allowed at Eastern Point Beach. So every year, I come and ask if we can have alcohol at the beach for that one day. So here I am.
So basically, what Dan's doing is we're getting, the council, if you approve this, if you tonight and later, if you later approve this, will allow alcohol consumption at the beach, on the beach. Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor.
Can you remind us what day the Brew Run is?
The Brew Run is going to be on September 7th this year. It's a Saturday. We have settled on it being the first Saturday after Labor Day every year to dodge other brew fests and 5Ks and the opening of the NFL season, as we ran into one year. We learned. Yep, it starts at 10:30 in the morning with the 5K walk and then ends last pour just short of 3 o'clock.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the Brew, the Brew Run and the alcohol consumption? Deputy Mayor?
I have another comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say that I know a lot of hard work goes into the Brew Run and I know we do it with the Chamber of Commerce, but I know that you do a lot of work for the Brew Run. And I just want to say thank you because I think there's a lot of city residents that go and people really enjoy it. It's, as you said, it grows every year and it is an event that people really love. So I just want to say thank you because I know you put a lot of work into it.
Oh, thank you. It's it's a group and with the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce and and a number of people who work here. And it's just, it's a great activity and it does, I think it's a positive for the city of Groton. So I'm happy to do it.
It it is. And one of the things that we're trying to do is we're trying to showcase Eastern Point Beach every month with a major event. This is the one for September. We just had Ragnar last Friday, which was a great kickoff for that two hundred mile relay up to Quincy, Mass. So trying to have major events at the beach to sho- showcase Eastern Point Beach. Any other questions or comments on this? All right, Doug, I did? No, I haven't. Okay, have I have I moved it yet? Okay, all right. I'll take a motion to move this to tonight's meeting of the mayor and council.
So moved. Second.
Okay, now then. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the finance suspension list. Ron?
This is the suspense list that we received from the tax collector. This is an annual list that comes over. What these are are taxes. They are still technically collectible. They're not written off. But they just move them off of their the regular list to move them to the suspense list. These are mainly personal property and motor vehicle taxes that you'll see in there. The reason for that is either the personal property, the business is closed, so there is no longer business there. Motor vehicles is a lot of times when people move out of state to different towns. So you'll see when on the list, which was included in your packet, there are descriptions of of what they've tried to do to collect. So you'll see that moved out of state, mail returned, multiple billings, moved out of state. So these are just ones that they can't find the people and don't feel that will be collected, but they are still technically collectible. So when we get our, at the end of the year, when we get our summary of our tax collections, we actually do have suspense collections that do come in. So if somebody does try to register a motor vehicle somewhere else at some point, this could come back to them. But this, so that's all this is, is just to help clean up the tax receivable listing and just move it to the suspense list, but it is technically still collectible. And we do this annually.
Right. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to tonight's mayor and council meeting.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. All right. All right, last item is the overall budget review. So in accordance with the charter. On a duly called meeting with the mayor and council to be held no later than the third Monday of May, the council shall approve the budget. So that's what we're going to be doing tonight. So with that, we've, all the departments have given presentations to the council. You have a a paper so far, we, after the BAA, we went from three point nine one down to to three point eight seven. So the increase right now is going from three point six seven to three point eight seven, which is a five percent increase. But there were some questions regarding budgets. And with that, I will open the floor for discussion of the budget. Deputy Mayor Depot, would you like to start? Mayor, I, okay, Ron. Oh, yes, before we start, let me, you're right. Sorry, Ron. Thank you. So in case, well, actually, I know you're aware because I sent you a text and I sent you an email. The RTM took us on a little bit of a roller coaster ride on Thursday and in the end they sustained the town council's number, which was a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction in both highway and in police. And with that, I'll let Ron talk about what your options are related to the budget. And then we'll get into a discussion of that. And then I'll turn the floor over to Deputy Mayor Depot.
So we'll start with the highway. I think that one's the the easier of the two. Historically, when there has been budget cuts that are, I'll call reasonable, by the town or by the town council for the highway, we've historically just went with their cut and decreased the highway budget by that amount. And then you also decrease the other side of the town funding. So therefore there is no effect to the the proposed budget taxes. So we just stay with that historical funding piece that we're we're in agreement with their cut. Not that I shouldn't say we're in agreement with their cut, but we're gonna go with with the traditional funding of how they made that that cut and fund it.
Right. I don't tend to come back to the council and say, would you increase it by the amounts that they cut? So it's a cut in revenue and a cut in expenditures of the equal amount. So the, there is no in, there is no implication on the mill rate.
Great. That'd be my recommendation. For for the police budget, that is a little bit different because the funding is a little bit different there with the traditional funding being the fifty percent city, fifty percent town minus the chief's budget. So with that cut, there are three options that you can can go with. The first option is you can cut the twenty-five thousand from the police budget and then also decrease the funding from from the town and not change the city's funding, which would be again a net no change to the budget because you're just decreasing theirs by the twenty-five thou- this police budget by the twenty-five thousand, the town's contr- portion by the twenty-five thousand. What that does is it breaks up that fifty fifty funding. The city's essentially funding twenty-five thousand dollars more. You could do no cut at all, which would then mean that the city would have to fund that additional twenty-five thousand dollar cut. With doing that, it would be a point zero one eight mill change. So it would go from the three point eight seven to the three point eight nine, so essentially a point zero two. And then the third piece of that is that the city could essentially match the cut by the the twenty-five thousand, which would be the cut to the police department of a fifty thousand dollar cut, which would in turn keep the funding, the fifty fifty historical, which would then decrease the current mill from the three point eight seven to the three point eight five. Historically, when, since I've been here, when we've seen this, the decision was made that we only cut the police by the the town's cut, cut the funding and still maintained our funding. And then even instances where we funded the entire cut. So we've we've, I've, since I've been here, I've never seen a decision made where we've matched their cut on our side to the police.
So so my recommendation to the council is basically to leave the cut where it is. So we don't cut any further, but I'm also not asking you to add twenty-five thousand dollars to the budget. Talk to the chief. He can manage his budget. So that's just information for you to think about while we're talking about the rest of this. Counselor Sheffield?
Counselor Depot, I believe is next.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot, did you want to, you had some questions, I think.
I mean, my questions are going to be general. So if if you want to field questions specific to that.
Question specifically?
Yeah, just a quick quick comment. Yeah, I think if the chief feels that, you know, we don't need the additional twenty-five or let's say fifty thousand dollars, if he's able to, you know, maneuver his budget without the additional money, I would think, you know, I'm in agreement with the you know, with the cut and not worry worry about.
So so I think where the chief is, I mean, I don't think he really wanted any cuts. But he he could, he figured that he could work with his budget with that twenty-five thousand dollar cut from the from the town's portion. He did feel that if we cut it the additional twenty-five, it could be, it would be harder for him to manage that budget.
Okay, so we're, because that's what I was looking to see if how the chief felt, if should we increase entirely on our end or?
And and the mayor, you can speak, but I feel that he was comfortable with with a twenty-five thousand dollar cut and moving stuff around.
He was.
Okay.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So on the twenty, if he's comfortable with twenty-five thousand, did it, do we know specifically where that, what that would affect specifically or is just overall move the monies?
So when the town council discusses and when the board, when the RTM discusses, they can't line item beat it. So they can't tell you where to cut. One of the discussions during the town council was they didn't like his approach to trying to buy three cars this year, next year and the next couple of years in order to get our fleet back up. So the original cut was going to be fifty thousand dollars because that was a vehicle. And then I reminded them that they're only paying half. So that means fifty thousand is a hundred thousand dollar cut. So that's why they did twenty-five. With the in, with the intent that that being equivalent to a fifty thousand dollar cut, but I'm not recommending that the council do that. So it will be a twen- it will be a twenty-five thousand dollar cut and then the chief will need to manage that. Whether he decides to take longer to get his fleet or whether he's going to manage it through overtime or through cuts to other programs or things like that. If you look at our budgets, our budgets are fairly tight. There's not a lot in there. So but it's up to the chief to decide how he's going to manage that. And I asked him, I said, are you okay? So when I caught, when I talked to the council tonight, are you okay with leaving it where it is? And he said he was all right with it.
Yeah, I mean, somebody feels comfortable. I mean, we were just talking about the parking ordinance and, you know, our officers, that's to me is another duty that they'll have. I don't know if that comes in overtime or not, but I'm just looking at that. I mean, you know, so just, I mean, if he says he's comfortable, he can work with it. It's something to consider for sure.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
So I will say specific to those two budgets and cutting them. I am not in favor of cutting them at all. When you look at our budgets, those are two departments that are at least their estimate this year. And I think their estimates most years are is very close to their budget. And we have departments that underspend routinely. So I, in my opinion, I think we also maybe want to remedy that by moving money from a different department to these two departments who use their budget, in my opinion, more effectively. So that's what I'll say about that. On this page, uh, one with the pie graph, where it has the the summary of revenues. I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So on budget twenty-four, we budgeted a utilization of the fund balance of two point one million. Does this mean that we did not use the fund balance? Because underestimated that's, there's nothing there.
Correct. There's nothing there because there's no revenue stream coming in. You're actually using fund balance. So when you do your actuals, there is no.
So but did we actually use that amount of fund balance?
For for twenty-four?
Correct.
Um, I have not projected it out. It hasn't, because it hasn't come in yet, but it'll always be a zero. Because the fact that you're using that fund balance number, there's no actual revenue coming in. That's kind of just just it's as a from a budget standpoint.
So how would I tell? So if we predicted that we would need to use two point one million of fund balance this year and we're saying next, this coming fiscal year, we need to use one point nine million.
Yep.
How do I tell whether or not we actually use that this current fiscal year?
So we won't know until the end of the year. So like the one point nine is essentially when I look at the fund balance as of six thirty twenty-three to figure out how much surplus we have. And then we budget as twenty-four is going to be a zero change as far as your revenue and expenditures are going to be equal because we don't know what they are going to be.
So may I try this another way?
Can I ask one more question?
Okay, sure, please.
Um, so under the actual for fiscal year twenty-three, so there's never a number under the actual?
No, because that's the piece of fund balance that you're using. So you'll see essentially the the way, I guess, I hope this makes it easier or harder. When you look at the eighteen million of expenditure for twenty twenty-three versus seventeen million of revenue, we used the six hundred thousand essentially a fund balance in that year.
In twenty-three?
Yeah, just because that's your difference between between your revenue and your expenditure.
Okay.
And then if we, if the revenues were more, you would actually have been adding to your fund balance. If your if your revenues exceeded your, or your revenue exceeded your expenditures.
Okay. So I I've brought this up before and I'm going to bring it up again. I have an issue. We have departments that routinely underspend their budget. And to me, I feel like that makes the budget as presented to us feel inaccurate. So when we have departments that say, I need this amount of money and then they don't spend it and then they ask for more money, which we have a couple of them, I am, I feel like that doesn't make sense, especially because if if a department goes over budget on something important, let's say the police department needs, all of our bulletproof vests get damaged in a flood. We need them. It's not in the budget. Where does that money come from?
Go ahead, Ron.
That we we have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of contingency built into the budget. We could also, would need to come back to council if we felt that a department was under, was going to come in under and we wanted to transfer some of their budget funds to a different department. Again, that would need council approval. We cannot go over the total ex- budgeted expenditures without going back to the Freeman. So we do have to stay within our total budget in within the group without having to go back to them. But it does allow for the departments to move money internally on their own if they feel that their overtime is going to be higher and they need to take out of contractual services to cover that. They can kind of manage their total budget as a whole. But again, if there's a department that's going to be coming in over budget, one, we'll use the fire truck um, a few years back that needed a frame repair. We ended up using contingency for that. It was either frame repair or one of the motors.
Right.
So we paid for that out of contingency funds. But we, it does allow for departments that are under under but under funding, under expending their budget, we could transfer from theirs to another one. But again, that would come back to the council for approval.
So who would instigate that if that was the case, if we needed to do that? Like, would that come from your office or your office? Who would be the one to go to a department and say, hey, you've got this money? This department needs it. I'm proposing and I'm going to ask the council to move it. Presumably that department head's going to be quite unhappy. But where does that, where would that come from?
That'd be an in- internal conversation, but ultimately the decision would be the mayor to to make that. But I think it would be a a lot bigger conversation internally between all the departments that would be involved.
So that is not happening, but if it did happen, Ron would come to me and say, hey, we have an issue. Talk about it. And then I would probably have the department heads together in a department head meeting, discuss this. We look at individual budgets. One of the things that we've been doing, where we need to get back into habit, but we, where I was having the finance director brief the council on where the budgets were at a high level so that we know where expenditures are. But if we ran into something like that, I would talk to the, hopefully the department head would let me know I would have an indication before. So it wouldn't be like, hey, I got a surprise. And then we get the department heads together. Ron would look at budgets, see where we are, we see where the utilization is. And then I would talk to the department heads about, are there any projects that we can put off? And then we would figure out how we could, how we could manage internally and move money around so that we can meet that that liability. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Um, if you go to page eight, the first page of the expenditures, is building and zoning and planning not on that list?
It's included in general government. So that, so general government includes all of that tabs in the general government plus the building and zoning and planning tabs.
Is there a reason for that?
That's just the way that it's always been rolled up.
Can, I mean, to me, considering that building and zoning and planning is in a different tab, can we for next year not do that? Can we separate it out?
These funds are based on how the financials are set up. Those are considered general government funds. And then you have the public safety funds, then you have the public work funds. That's, I'm guessing why historically it was done that way. And then they just put the separate tab in there just so that section wouldn't be so so large. That's, I'm guessing why historically it was done that way, and then they just put the separate tab in there just so that section wouldn't be so, so large.
Is there a way to break it out the same way like public safety has police and fire broken out underneath?
We, we could do something.
I'm not asking you to do that for this year, obviously, because that would be silly, but, um.
Under general, sorry, under general government, it also includes human resources, finance. I mean, everybody with the exception of the safety, the public safety, meaning police and fire and highway, right? They're broken and public works, not public works, not parks and rec. So they're all lumped in together.
I mean.
There, so your recommendation is to try to break it out so you can see it better on the, on that page.
Yeah, because, I mean, there's a reason that we broke it out physically in the book.
Well, I think that was just to help with that section. It would have been, just been so big with everything in it. But yeah, I, I, again, that's just the way it's always, always, I'm not gonna say it's the right way, just the way that it's always been. And then when you get into budget season, you just kind of follow.
Hmm. Um, well, because when I'm looking, when I'm looking at it, I'm like, where is planning and zoning and building on this list? Um, so I just feel like it's a, it's confusing to me when we have the tabs, but I can't see the breakout here. Um, and I know that's kind of a pain because it would make you move the graph down probably.
Oh, pretty graphic in that page.
There you go. Um, so I guess I don't know if, I'm sure that there will be more discussion with the rest of the council, but I, um, in my opinion, I think that the planning and zoning budget, which is going up quite a bit, um, you know, their projects are time sensitive and historically have not, they've underused their budget for several years in a row. My preference would be to, you know, not cut it a crazy amount, but I think that if we were to cut their, um, contractual services budget, some amount, so on page forty-six where their contractual services budget is, which actually I think we got replacement, did we get replacement pages for this one? I forget.
We did.
If we did, I have them over here. Um, but my thought would be that we.
Well, the replacement pages were their recommendations, not
Right.
what the council's gonna do.
Um, so last year, we, they budgeted a hundred and thirty-five thousand under that, and I know that they moved some from contractual services, um, but not in planning. Um, and they, they do expect to encumber that amount. Um, I just feel like two hundred and five, jumping it to two hundred and five is a lot. Um, and I, my preference would be to fully fund the police budget in the highway budget and pull that money from planning and zoning. And.
Is that number what you had?
Yeah. Um, it, because if the police need something within this budget year, generally, that's gonna be something material. If something comes up or a car. Whereas planning, if they have a project that's going to go over budget, they have the ability to push it off time-wise to adjust their budget. The police department can't do that. So, um, I haven't done the math, but I will do some math before the next meeting. Um, but my preference would be to reduce the planning and zoning budget some amount, at least significant enough to fully fund the, um,
Yeah.
police and highway budgets.
If you do that amount, that's fifteen thousand, right?
All right.
And then I don't know, you know, if you had additional.
Um, what was the, the cut to the police was twenty-five thousand?
That's correct.
Was that also the cut to the highway?
That's correct. I, uh, this is just my recommendation. I would not fund the highway just because of the funding. Yeah, and the funding to keep that truly, just to not set precedent.
Well, so, so that was gonna be my, but also if we don't cut it at all, we're still spending more than the town on that budget. They're still not paying half, or they're still not paying their.
The, the, for the highway budget, the town, they pay a hundred percent of the highway with the, with the exception, it is reduced by the town aid road grant. But that is a hundred percent funded by the town. That would be why my recommendation. And, and there are projects that can.
Be pushed.
Right. So the special act talks about the town shall provide those monies that are necessary and proper for the repairing and making of roads in the city of Groton that are town roads. That's the sentence that gets us into everything, and they're, they're required to pay all of the funding for highway. And then by tradition, they pay fifty percent of the police budget minus the chief's salary. We pay the chief's salary and benefits and everything else.
So I think my preference, because planning has not encumbered the hundred thirty-five thousand under contractual services yet. They plan to encumber it, but it's not yet encumbered. Um, so I find it difficult to increase that line item when we're not sure they're spending it this year, and they didn't spend it the year prior either. And again, I know that they, we discussed there were issues and reasons that it got delayed, that things got delayed, but with our budget going up, the town budget is already going to be going up so much, I really would prefer if we could lower our increase as much as possible. Um, I definitely think at least that budget should be cut, the twenty-five thousand to go to the police department. Um, at a, at a minimum, I think we should make that.
Put you one eighty, I think.
Adjustment.
Let's go to that, two oh five.
Yeah.
On its twenty-five, I should put you at one eighty, so that would put that at one eighty. Is that what you're looking at, maybe?
Maybe.
At a middle.
Um, but then I'll leave it up to the rest of the discussion. That's where I fall on the budget. I think our, our budgets are very tight. I understand that. Um, we're using a good chunk of fund balance, and it's still increasing. Um, was there a discussion last year, we elected to use more fund balance, two point one million? Is there a reason that, is it just percentage-wise, we only want to use the one point nine this year?
Cor- correct. We, we shoot, the bond rating agencies like us to have a higher fund balance in most municipalities because of our expenditures being low and, and the concentration of our tax base. So normally, your, a municipality is looking between fifteen to twenty percent is their range, with like, most of them trying to be around that eighteen percent. With ours, they would like to see us between twenty and twenty-five. So we've been shooting for that twenty-five percent of expenditures to keep our unrestricted fund balance. So it, so we did, the one point nine came from the projection off of the, the twenty-three. So we did use some of, we didn't, so like for the two point one, we used some of that two point one, but not all of it, which is why it dropped to the one point nine.
So basically, to answer one of the questions you asked in the beginning, if all the departments spend all their money, then we need to use that fund balance in order to balance the budget. And then if they spend, if they underspend, then that money goes back to the fund balance, and we don't use all of that. We, based on our fiscal policies and financial policies that we have in ma- in keeping our fund balance in the high, in the closer to twenty-five percent, uh, we were able to increase our bond rating two years ago?
Yeah, I believe it was two years ago.
So that's one of the things that we've been able to do, to get that back up.
Okay.
So, and the, and to the mayor's point, if, in, if it was a, if we had the perfect budget where we, the exact amount of revenues came in that we're budgeted for, and the max, exact amount of expenditures came in, next year, we would not be able to use fund balance, because we would have used it up and brought it down to that level.
Right. I mean, some people call it the rainy, rainy day fund. I don't necessarily like to use that term, but, uh, we do have fund balance in the event that we need to use it. We can use it. Did you?
Can.
Sorry, go ahead, please. Deputy Mayor Depot, you saw the floor.
Also, during budget discussions, we had a question about how the salary study was done. And I don't believe that we got that information.
That has not been presented to you yet.
Was, I was under the impression that we were gonna get that before we voted on the budget.
Hmm, no. It wa- it was asked for the information. I did, and, and I talked to Linda. She's preparing a presentation for that. But I didn't, I did not get the impression that that was tied to the budget, because the salaries are what the salaries are.
Well, okay. Okay.
Did you wanna make a recommendation now or make it at the meeting? Okay. Any other questions or comments on the budget? Where's mine? What did I do in my agenda? Any other question or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Deputy Mayor as far as the, the police department. Um, but with hearing the information and more being explained, and we can move monies, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend cutting now because, for the fact of we're going off the if they needed something, and he can, and if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm understanding, the cut was, is because the police chief had planned on vehicles, correct? That was the big cut due to vehicles that he wanted, he was planning on replacing?
That was one of the discussion items at the town council.
Okay, and he had, uh, purchasing new vehicles over a five-year term?
Correct. He's looking to do three vehicles a year. That'll get us back up to an age of about, uh, three point five years per vehicle.
Okay, so we're voting on a, a budget that's yearly, so, and I understand as far as what Deputy Mayor's saying is planning, and yes, we went over it, uh, a couple times. Um, but I'm concerned that, let's say, that a lot of these projects go through in planning, what would happen if it goes short? So now do we borrow from somebody else if, if we cut from planning? And then these projects go through, and let's say they fall short, then where do we go? Do we go to what, the fund again, let's say? Or are we gonna move monies over to planning? So, I mean, I think where we're sitting, and if we can have that discussion, the mayor can have the discussion with department heads and then decide if we need a vehicle or whatever one department from the other needs, and that you're ki- you're able to do that and discuss with the department heads and make a decision from there and bring it to council. If that's available, I mean, if we have that flex, um, I would say stay with that.
Okay, any other questions, Counselor Sheffield?
Um, I had referenced two weeks ago regarding, um, Leslie's budget as far as, uh, the sixty thousand dollars that was going to the cost of property in this year's budget and seventy thousand next year. So has that sixty thousand been used up already for this year? All right, so where's technically a hundred and thirty thousand still potentially out there that can be moved if need be?
There, there is one, um, there, currently, it just was posted today, um, the RFP for the cost of house, which those monies should be, um, for three fifty-two themes for the demolition, so those monies should be encumbered by the end of the year. I'm not sure where that's gonna come in at this point, so there is a project that is out there that will happen. Man, the, the actual, um, demolition may not happen prior to June thirty, but we should have a contractor in place to make sure that's encumbered by then.
So it'll be covered for the sixty thousand going forward now, but seventy thousand is still up in the air. That's for next year.
I believe that was the budget for next year.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Depot.
Um, so one last question about planning. And I, I think I asked this during the last budget discussion as well. But how do you plan to ensure that this, the planned money for this department gets spent for these items? Because, for example, this, the charette is on here for forty thousand dollars for the next budget, which we already found that we couldn't do that this year. So what is your plan as essentially the supervisor of that department to make sure that that money gets spent?
Well, other than working with her to see if we can have a charette done now, if she comes to me and says forty thousand dollars is not enough for charette, and I need to find out, okay, then what else, how much money do you need, and where are you gonna get that money in order to have the charette? Now, that's probably not an answer that you necessarily like, but that's an honest answer.
Okay.
I mean, I do expect my department heads to manage their budgets and to accomplish the things that, that they've anticipated getting done. Now, sometimes, uh, I don't know, things happen, not necessarily due to inaction or interaction on their part, but, but, uh, I do understand your concern about underspending. And it is a concern that I have too, because I want to get, we need to get things done. One of the challenges that we've had is that we've done a lot of studies, and we need to produce something as a result of those studies.
One last question. If we are to propose, if we propose a different number for the budget,
Yep.
um, do we just propose one number, or can we propose cuts to a specific department, or do we have to propose cuts to a specific department?
You mean to read what the charter says, or do you wanna answer it? Because actually, you'll probably answer it better than what the charter says. Charter's a little wordy.
So you actually have line item discretion as far as, so if you, if there is a line item in a budget that you feel should be increased or decreased, you have that ability.
So you can, you can cut the bottom line on our department, or you can go up to a line item and say, I wanna cut, for example, contractual services, I wanna cut contractual services in this department by this much. That is, that's in the charter.
Could.
We reviewed it this afternoon.
Okay, is it possible to just cut the general number and say, and propose a different bottom line number?
Of the department?
No, of the whole budget. To go back to the mayor's office and have him decide?
No, you'd have, you'd, you'd have to.
You have to pick a department?
Yeah, because now you're, yeah.
Okay. Um, oh, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
It might require.
You saw the floor.
It might require math. Um, which I, I know I could do by myself if I wasn't, um, if I was more focused, I guess. So if we were to decrease the budget by a hundred thousand dollars, what does that do to the mill rate? Oh, is that on that sheet you gave us?
No, it's not.
Oh, darn.
It's I had a feeling something like this maybe happened. So seventy thousand would be five hundredths of a mill. It's essentially a hundred and forty thousand equals one tenth of a mill. So if a hundred and forty was cut, it would go from a three eight seven to a three seven seven.
Wait, say that again, please.
So if a hundred and forty thousand, approximately,
Mm-hmm.
the mill would, instead of being the three eight seven, would be a three seven seven. Or at seventy thousand, it would go just down the, the half of, half that.
So what does that mean for a hundred thousand dollars of? Hundred thousand dollars of. Property. One tenth of it.
So for a hundred thousand, if you went down a tenth, it would be te- a ten dollar increase from the previous year. Or be three hundred and seventy seven in taxes.
And going from three six seven to three seven seven would be a three percent increase.
Wait, what?
In the budget. It'd be. So the mill rate, if the mill rate is three point six five.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, hold on, and you s- somebody mentioned three point seven seven, right? Is that?
Yeah, that if.
Okay, so if we did, if we got to three point seven seven, divided by three point six five, which is where we are now. That's a one point three percent, that's a three percent. Uh increase as opposed to a five percent increase, which is projected right now.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Is that, okay. I'm just taking, where am I, these numbers?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's by doing what?
In order, that would be reducing the expenditure expenditures by a hundred and forty thousand, approximately a hundred and forty thousand. Overall, just overall is, yep. Uh actually, let me rephrase that, overall that are funded by taxes, cause there are certain departments that are funded. Not solely by taxes that would, so it wouldn't have a one to one, so that would be departments funded. By taxes or projected fees that are in the general fund.
Correct.
Is there certain departments that are funded by taxes only, or are there certain?
Well, finance is fifty fifty.
Finance, HR, highway.
Right.
Um police, those are your ones that are.
That are not one hundred percent by taxes.